I call to order this meeting of the Coweta County Board of Education Agenda 8:37, 6:30 PM, May 13th, 2025. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, motion passes seven to zero. Dr. Horton, turn it over to you for recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, I'll call on Public Information Officer Dean Jackson to bring you our recognition for tonight. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, Dr. Horton. Board members, we have one recognition tonight, and that is of Elm Street Elementary School, who's been recognized, recognized this year as a Title I distinguished school. And to make that recognition and talk a little bit about their accomplishment, I'm going to call, we actually have both of our Title I and federal program directors, both the longtime and incoming. I'm going to call on Dr. Latrina Gates for this introduction.
I'm glad Ms. Wimbish is here to also be a part of this recognition tonight as well. Good afternoon, Superintendent Horton, board members, as well as attendees. Each year, the Georgia Department of Education recognizes K-12 schools and school districts through its academic achievement program. The program honors Title I schools in three categories. The first category is to be recognized as a Title I reward school. In order for a Title I school to be recognized in this category, they must be the highest performing or top 5% of the highest progress in the state of Georgia. And this is based on all subgroups, the all-student subgroups, for the two most recent years. The second category is Title I distinguished school. In order for a Title I school to be honored as a distinguished school, they must be, they must rank within the top 5% of all Title I schools and earn the highest performance for all-student subgroups. The third category is the National ESEA distinguished school. And in order for a Title I school to be recognized in this category, they must be a distinguished school, they must complete an application and go through the selection criteria. Only two schools out of the state of Georgia is recognized annually. Now, for tonight, Elm Street has received all three of these Title I achievement categories over several years. In 2014, 15, and 16, Elm Street was recognized as a reward school. Again, the top 5% earning significant progress. In 2017, they received the distinguished award. Once more, top 5%, highest performance. And in 2020, they were recognized as the National ESEA distinguished school. Tonight, we are recognizing Elm Street Elementary as 2024 Title I distinguished school from the 22, 2022, 2023 G-Mass scores. Please help me in recognizing and honoring Dr. Kristi Hildebrand, as well as her school staff and school family for achieving this exceptional award tonight. They will be receiving a certificate as well as a sign. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Good evening, good evening. Thank you so much for allowing us this opportunity to celebrate and be celebrated this evening. It's both an honor and a privilege to be able to stand before you tonight to celebrate another great milestone in our Elm Street career. Thank you both, to our, both of our directors for showcasing the history of awards as well. Not often you can say both of our directors. That's awesome. Tonight's award and all of the ones, though, that have come before it really belong to the teachers and the students and just our overall Elm Street staff, all of the families that have come together throughout the years. It reflects their unwavering commitment, their resilience, and their intentional excellence of our total school community. We remain proud of all the accomplishments we have earned, including those highest progress awards, the highest performing awards, and the national distinction. And we are excited about the fact that this is now a top 5% award for us two years in a row. So we're going to keep that trend going as long as we can. But the recognition is not simply about test scores, it's the hard work and determination of everyone, every single day, what our dynamic teachers bring, what our students bring, day in and day out, the trust in the partnership of our families and the shared belief that every learner matters. It's that culture of thinking and high expectations across our entire campus. And that level of excellence happens through intentionality. So really, tonight, I want to say thank you. Thank you to the incredible staff and students who bring their best selves to school with them every single day. And thank you to the families, the school community, the district leadership, including yourselves, who believe in us and help sustain our success. Tonight, I'm joined by our Rock Acceleration teacher, Elizabeth Rantz, our Teacher of the Year, Molly Bryan, and our Assistant Principal, Melinda Walden. And we stand before you just as proud representatives of our school. Thank you for the support you give us. We're proud and pleased to be able to stand here as a distinguished school once again. Our staff theme this year was intentional excellence, and we're going to continue to strive for it day in, day out, as we work our mission. Every learner matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. That's fantastic. Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Congratulations. We know it takes a lot of hard work every day, just like Dr. Hildebrand said. So do I have a motion to approve the minutes of April 1st of 2025?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, motion passes seven to zero. Dr. Horton, action items group one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before we begin action items group one, just mention to everyone here in the crowd, we still don't have the ability to project onto the computer screens and the television monitors after our recent cyber incident. There are hard copies of all of the agenda items if, if you wish to take a look at them. So we, we apologize, we're going a little bit old school this evening. First item I have for you in group one is to approve a resolution to adopt the new five-year local facilities plan. Approval was requested for a resolution to adopt the new five-year local facilities plan. Copy of the resolution is attached, Mr. Chair. This item is a result of a lot of hard work by Mr. Cheek and his team, and also a recent visit by the Georgia Department of Education Facilities Validation Team. So with that, I recommend approval.
Superintendent is recommending approval to, of a resolution to adopt the new five-year local facilities plan. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Motion, I second. Any discussion? All those in favor, motion passes seven to zero.
The next item I have for you in group one is to approve a proposal from the Poplar Road Elementary School PTO to purchase a digital message display sign. Poplar Road Elementary School PTO, request approval to purchase a digital message display sign. Estimated project cost is $24,368.33. Requirements of board policy FEAE have been met. Supporting documentation is attached. This project will be funded by the Poplar Road Elementary PTO. Mr. Chair, I recommend approval.
Superintendent's recommended approval for the Poplar Road Elementary School PTO to purchase a digital message display sign at an estimated cost of $24,368.33. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, motion passes seven to zero.
The next item I have for you in group one is to approve a proposal from the White Oak Elementary School PTO to purchase a digital message display sign. White Oak Elementary School PTO, request approval to purchase a digital message display sign. Estimated project cost is $37,483. Requirements of board policy FEAE have been met. Supporting documentation is attached. This project will be funded by the White Oak Elementary PTO. Board members, you may have noticed the difference on this amount of project cost compared to Poplar Road. I saw that when, when the items came in. Did get clarification, the work to demo the old sign and to install the new sign at White Oak is much more extensive. So I recommend approval.
Superintendent's recommended approval for the White Oak Elementary School PTO to purchase their digital message display sign at a estimated cost of $37,483. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Any discussion? All those in favor, motion passes seven to zero.
The last item I have for you in group one is to request approval of a resolution for placement of increased senior exemptions on the November 4th, 2025 ballot. Approval was requested for a resolution asking the Coweta County Board of Elections to place increased senior tax exemptions on the November 4th, 2025 election ballot. Local legislation to increase these exemptions was passed by the General Assembly after being requested as part of a broader resolution of the Coweta County Board of Education on February the 14th of 2025. The Coweta County Board of Education's original resolution requested an annual 5% cap on reassessment of all residential homesteaded properties in the county, removal of the 20 mil cap that is specific to school systems, as it is allowed by the Georgia Constitution, and an increase to the general fund reserve cap from 15% to 20% of budgeted general funds. These senior exemption increases were the only item approved by the local legislative delegation and subsequently the General Assembly at this time. Copy of the resolution requesting that these increased exemptions be placed on the ballot and the required public notice is attached. Mr. Chair, I recommend approval.
Superintendent is recommended approval of the resolution to place the increased senior exemptions on the November 4th, 2025 ballot. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? I will add just one quick comment on this, since I was involved nearly daily working with the local delegation. Don't want to thank them for their work getting this through. As the superintendent mentioned, this, the senior exemptions was part of a broader resolution. And when there was some discussion on that, we worked with the local delegation. And at our request and our approval, they went forward through the General Assembly with the, just the senior tax exemption. So they, we appreciate their moving on that. So any, any further discussion? All those in favor, motion passes seven to zero. Dr. Horton, action items group two.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first item I have in group two is to approve school nutrition bids for the '25-'26 school year. Approval was requested to approve school nutrition bids for FY '25-'26 school year. Bid tabulation sheet for the nutrition program has been provided. U.S. Foods with a bid that's rolling over from actually school year '22-'23 of $7,608,739 for groceries was renewed for the '25-'26 school year. This is the third of four possible renewals. Thomaston Milk Company's bid for SY '25-'26 of $874,097.3 Thomaston was the only milk bidder. Imperial Dade's bid for '25-'26 of $308,099.6 for chemicals and paper was the lowest bid received on time and complete. Royal Food Services produce bid for '25-'26 of $12,326.25. Royal was the only produce bidder. And Flowers Baking Company's bid for '25-'26 of $250,714.80. And Flowers was the only bread bidder. Mr. Chair, I recommend approval.
The superintendent is recommending approval of the school nutrition bids, as he just described, for the '25, 2025-'26 school year. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Any discussion? All those in favor, motion passes seven to zero.
The last item I have in group two is to approve bids for 2025 floor covering projects. Approval was requested for bids for floor covering replacement at the following locations: Eastside Elementary School, Arncosargent Elementary School, and Noonan High School, building 600, 700, and 800, 900. The low bid for Eastside Elementary School was Torrance Construction Company in the amount of $289,968. The low bid for Arncosargent Elementary School was submitted by Mid-Atlantic Restoration in the amount of $253,487.61. The low bid for Noonan High School was submitted by Mid-Atlantic Restoration in the amount of $406,438.44. The alternate number one to install resonous flooring in restrooms is declined. The bid tabulation sheet is attached. Board members, I will mention to you, these floor covering projects at Eastside and Arncos coincide with the sewer projects that we'll be having this summer, or that have going on over the course of the summer. And the floor covering at Noonan High is the areas that we did not touch the floors after the tornado. So we need to get all that flooring at Noonan High on the same schedule, so to speak. So I recommend approval.
Superintendent's recommended approval of bids for floor cover and replacement at Eastside Elementary, Arncosargent Elementary, and the six, 700 building and eight, 900 buildings at Noonan High School. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, motion passes seven to zero. Action items group two trips, none there. So on to superintendent's report. Dr. Horton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, I'll call on Assistant Superintendent for Finance, Keith Chapman, to bring you budget report, sales tax, and our first budget workshop. Mr. Chapman?
Budget report, substantially under budget this month due to just timing differences across the years as we project out. Cumulative, we're approximately a million and a half under budget at this point. Do not project going into reserves, as we've stated earlier. Sales tax, good collections, over 3.1 million. However, it's slight decrease year over year, about four tenths of a percent from one year to the next, but basically flat.
Go ahead.
Budget workshop, this is the first of two budget workshops. The second one will be next Tuesday night, 6:30, same location. Fortunately, we don't have the screens. We'll work from the budget workshop document that's, we've used in the last several years. I don't know if you can see, but it looks... We start with our current year FY '25 budget revenue, just under 300 million. The first component of that is our state funding, our projected funding for '25 last year, and I, current year, excuse me. I know we're working in current year, but we're getting to '26. Just under 139 million. We saw an increase of 8.2 million to our QBE funding. Our local fair share increased, which is a decrease to our funding, over $2 million. That increase would have been higher other than due to the level of funding that the state has that's capped right now. At some point, we will see an additional 10 million decrease there as funding increases. But for now, it's 2 million. Small decrease in transportation, small increase in nursing, projected initial allotment of 144 and a half million dollars for FY '26, 5.8 million dollar increase in state funding. And please remember that number, that'll be important when we get to some following pages here. Not predict, projecting any change in midterm, expecting similar to current year. Slight increase to federal indirect costs, just, just as the federal programs change, the amount we can charge back to the general fund may change. Bus replacement, there was a large grant available to us for the current year that is not there for FY ' '26, so there's a substantial decrease. Some additional school safety funds, an additional safety grant. Custodial supplements, we did pay in '25, however, they were not budgeted because that information came out late. Half a million dollar increase, other state grants, those vary from year to year. Don't anticipate any material change in our interest income. Rates are dropping slightly. Had they not dropped, we would have projected an increase. Title of alarm tax, still seeing small growth there, so slight increase. Other taxes miscellaneous, we don't anticipate any change. When we did the milit rate for the current year, we did not roll back, which allowed us to maintain funds to, so we would not go into reserves. And that's 5.7 million. Using a 5% digest increase, maintaining the current milit rate of 15.41 mils, that would be $7 million dollar increase. Projected revenue increase right at $19 million. Total projected revenue for general fund, 312.3 million for FY '26. Look at the expenditure side, 313 million projected expenditures, budgeted in the reserves, $812,000. That's one of the lowest figures we've had in many years. Salaries and benefits, $285 billion, 91.09% for general fund. The main changes in our budget were personnel-related. You'll notice a few of these items are highlighted. The items that are highlighted were dictated by the state. We had no control in those. And those are over $10 million. So the changes mandated by the state exceeded $10 million when our state funding only increased $5.8 million. We have increased state health for certified employees, as well as classified, 2.2 million on the certified because their rate had been higher, 4.2 million on the classified employees. TRS rate increase, small decrease in ERS rate, 1.8 million dollar increase. Steps for certified employees, 1.8 million. We are also looking at steps for classified employees and administrators who've not received them, classified nor administrator did not receive them last year. Also looking at cost of living, 2% for all employees certified, classified, and admin. We have five remedial teachers, one regular ed teacher in, is growth positions. We hope we don't have to use those, but to be safe, we do have a few positions, not as many as we have budgeted. We've reduced three teaching positions just due to enrollment change. We haven't decreased, but the population has shifted from location to location. So it, you may pick up a teacher at one location, lose one at another. The net effect we're putting in there right now is three. We anticipate it possibly being as many as nine, but to be safe, we've only put three. The custodial supplement, again, we paid those in current year FY '25, they just weren't budgeted, that information. Other major changes, we had the increased safety grant, 627,000. We've not been able to maintain nurses as employees, we've had to use contracted services. So we've added funds to the budget there instead of salaries budgeted for dealing with contracted nurses. Next page, it's our major expenditures. We've had this page for several years now. I'm not going to go through all of them. You see utilities are by far largest, SRO, software, we have to transfer to some other funds, help sustain things there. Insurance, maintenance items, fuel, transportation. All of those amount to 27.2 million, 8.7% of the budget. All other operating expenses, 653,000, are less than 1%. We're projecting our reserves at the end of the year to start July 1, 2025, 46.6 million, just under 15%, 14.88. And on the horizon, we're looking, as always, maintaining a healthy reserve. As y'all just approved, the item to go on the ballot, potential increase in the senior exemption. And we also need to catch up on our facility maintenance renovation items that were delayed, excuse me, due to the Noonan High School project.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Any, any questions, Mr. Chapman, board members?
I have a couple of questions. For the safety grant that we have been given, what are, what are, how are those to be allotted?
The additional funds that we are, that we anticipate receiving, we haven't allotted those yet, although we have been in some discussions with the Sheriff's Department related to some equipment that they may want. Last year, safety grant funds we used to help pay SROs. Part of that was used, well, actually, all of that, I believe, was used to help pay SROs. And Mr. Latimer, if I'm not mistaken, those grant funds have to be spent down by '26, correct?
Yes.
Yep. Mr. Chap, oh, did you finish? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Chapman, I did have a couple of questions on the increase in the state health benefit. For classified employees, if I'm not mistaken, the school system, we have to pay 100% of that, is that correct? And that would be bus drivers, custodians, those non-teaching positions. So we pay $22,620 per employee. I mean, well deserved and, but that's...
This, it'll be the same amount for certified and classified when this goes into effect.
Right, right. But the state does help us pay for the, the certified employees. Okay, so that's a big, a big increase. I just wanted to point that out. So, and then the 2% cost of living raise, I think, is, in today's climate with the economy, is, is a, you know, very reasonable in effort there. So that's all of my questions. Thank you.
I have one other question. Who negotiates state insurance? I know that is handed down to us, but is, who, who does that negotiation up there? Is it with the State House and Senate? Or is it just they negotiate and then hand us down the extended cost?
I, I'm not aware. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm not aware who, who they're negotiating with, but I do know that, that the legislature approves whatever changes and they're, they're passed on to us.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Farmer?
And I had a question. On the contracted nursing services.
Yes.
I think I'm clear on it, but I just want to make sure everybody in the audience and the public. That's in addition to our regular school-based nurses, correct?
Right. It's, there are some places we are unable to fill the position with an employee that we contract with an agency to place a nurse in our facility.
And, and could you go back to the fair share and go over there a little bit? I couldn't make out what you said.
Sure.
About the 10 million that might be.
Currently, our local fair share is going up $2 million. So it's decreasing our state funding. The local fair share is capped based on the state funding level, right? And when it reaches certain levels, it will be fully implemented. Right now, due to some restrictions on the state funding, our local fair share is capped by approximately $10 million. It would be over $50 million if it were fully implemented. And, I mean, that's not going to occur in the next year, but as state funding increases, that will increase. And as our digest grows in value, our local fair share increases also.
I had a quick question about the expenditures on the expenditure page.
Yes.
I know in my household, expenses seem to be increasing, and I'm sure it's the same way for the school system. How much has that bottom line increased year over year? Do you have any idea? I know it's not on here.
Very minimal.
Very minimal.
We're trying to work within the same time, same constraints as current year.
Okay. Thank you.
And Mr. Dubose, you referring to the major operating expenses?
Yes.
Yes.
Insurance, I'm, you know, I'm just like a, you know.
Very minimal. Yes, sir.
That sort of thing.
Yes, sir. Most of the, as you can see, most of the, the increase in the budget is, is due to those rising personnel costs. If you look at insurance, the TRS employer increase, Mr. Chapman alluded to it earlier, and certified steps, all of those that are passed down to us, that's 10.1 million. That's those items that are highlighted in yellow. Locally, the discretion comes in on those steps for classified employees and that 2% cost of living. That, that is, you know, where a lot of the local discretion comes in because the state hasn't, hasn't passed on raises for employees this year like they do in some years. The other thing I will mention to you, we are projected to be down The other thing I will mention to you, we are projected to be down teachers. We're, we're looking at between three and nine is where we are right now. We track enrollment, school to school, day by day with our human resources department. So we watch that very closely. So, so even in a year where we're looking at being down on the personnel side, costs are still going up, especially related to benefits. And that's where you'll see a lot of the increase in the budget. So I say that to you because I know a lot of times you get asked questions about why are we spending so much, or this or that or the other. Personnel, we're, we're reducing personnel, but costs are still going up. So just wanted to make sure I give that to you for clarification. Also, salary breakdown for you, just so that you're aware, administrative central office salaries represent 2.99% of salaries. School-based administrators, that's 5.49% of our salaries. Certified teachers, 72.27% of salaries. And of course, our classified employees, that's 19.25% of our salaries. Of course, that makes up 91.09% of our budget. We'll also mention to you, I've talked to other superintendents, I've seen comparisons. We compare very favorably related to the number of central office administrators and staff that we have. We have formulas that we use to, to make sure that our schools are staffed appropriately, and we track those all the time in the interest of making sure that we're good stewards.
Mr. Chapman, thank you very much. If anybody, nobody has anything else, we'll, we'll move along. Next item I have for you is, I'll turn it over to Dr. Kemp for your board goal report and your staff and student attendance. Dr. Kemp, welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Horton. For the eighth attendance reporting period, the highest staff attendance was Arbor Springs Elementary School. The highest attendance attendance in the program area was Central Educational Center. The highest elementary student attendance was Thomas Crossroads Elementary School. The highest middle school student attendance was Majors Middle School. And the highest high school attendance goes to home of the Cougars, Noonan High School. Sir. Moving on to the board, the board goal report for this month, board goals report, I would like to draw your attention to our upcoming administrative workshop, which will be held Monday and Tuesday, June the 2nd, June the 3rd, 2025, at the Donald W. Nixon Center for Performing and Visual Arts. Both school and central office administrators will collaborate and participate in training activities that align with our system strategic plan. The theme for this year is visible leadership for visible learning. This aligns with the book our staff will begin reading over the summer, The Illustrated Guide to Visible Learning, which emphasizes the impact on student learning and highlights the best practices. Additionally, our focus this year will include preparing for upcoming school system accreditation, visit scheduled for early next school year. Participants will also concentrate in budgetary matters, student support issues, legal updates from our attorney Nathan Lee, and many other continuous school improvement topics.
Thank you, Dr. Kemp. Last item I have for you, board members, before we turn it over to Mr. Wilson and Ed Planners as your facilities and construction report. You can see Noonan High School, BP 1, we paid that, 100% of that, also 100% of bid package 2. Still working through some punch list work on door modifications and HVAC issues on BP 3, hope to get that completed here in the very near future. Northgate Tennis Courts, they're going to get started here in the next couple of weeks, trying to remediate the issues that we've had there. CEC, preliminary design drawings have been submitted and approved. We're hoping to have final plans approved this month, and that would allow us to bring potentially the CEC project to you for your approval, hopefully late, later this summer. The Arnold Middle re-roof, work will begin as soon as we get, get out of school at the end of next week, and we'll have that project completed prior to the start of school. Same can be said for shield projects at our middle schools, at Arnold, East Calwita Middle and Lee Middle. Some work has begun in those locations, but the vast majority of that work will be completed over the summer, and we're scheduled to have that completed prior to the start of school. You've heard a lot about sewer upgrades at Arnco-Sargeant East Side, we'll work to get those done over the summer and have those finished prior to the start of school as well. And then after we finish graduations, we're planning on May 28th and June 7th to finish some renovation at no cost to the system on the synthetic turf fields at Northgate and, excuse me, at Noonan and East Calwita High School. Board members, I'll take any questions you have. You approved the floor covering tonight, so we've already got that one covered.
I do have a question about the, the shield projects. Once this list of, of schools are complete, will that be all the schools we will have done for the shield, or we still have a few more to go?
We will still have two high schools that we'll have to finish. Noonan, we did that one when, when we, when we built new over there, we still need to do Northgate and East Calwita.
But it'll get all the, all the elementary schools and all the, the middle schools?
Yes, sir.
Which is main concern.
That'll complete all the elementaries and middles. Yes, sir. All right. With that, I'm going to call on Mr. Wilson from Ed Planners. While he's coming down, I'll, I'll do a brief introduction. Mr. Wilson was a superintendent for many years, years ago, and he's been doing demographic work and enrollment studies for systems for, for several years now. Board members, you'll recall about every two years, we try to have an outside group, either Mr. Wilson's group or another, come in and check our homework, so to speak, to make sure that what we think we're seeing in the way of enrollment is what we're actually seeing. So with that, Mr. Wilson, I'll say welcome. Wilson, I'll say welcome, and we're going to turn it over to you. Everybody does have a hard copy of the, the presentation, and sorry for the technical difficulties.
All right. Well, so, thank you for that introduction, and Mr. Chairman, board members, superintendent, it's my pleasure to be with you tonight. And as Dr. Horton mentioned, we were back here in January of '23 doing a report similar to this. A lot of school districts do this every five years. There are more and more school districts going to every two years or yearly to get an update because of the growth patterns and the need to be really tight with your enrollment and knowledge of your enrollment. So it's, it's my pleasure to be here two years later. So the second page, it says the annual report, and as, as I stated, we were here in January of '23, so it's two years before. The report really focuses on two things, trends and indicators. So we take a look at, trying to make it where you would have knowledge based on initiatives, teaching allotments, building utilization, attendance zone needs and those kind of things. And we, we use indicators and trends, and the indicators that we use, we use the GIS, Geographical Information System. That's a software that we use to map and track building permits, housing, other types of things that would occur in your county. We always use the U.S. Census Bureau. We use the governor's office of planning and budget. We use the Atlanta Regional Commission. We use the online analytical statistical information systems, which is basically your Department of, of Community Health. We use the building permit database, it's a national database. We also do your local building permits through your local cities and, and county. So we try to get as much information as we can to put you in a better position to know where you need to add or do work for your schools to be able to house students the way you really want to. So the third page, there, most of them are numbered, some of them are not, but most of them are numbered. So this is, this is a brief page on enrollment factors. We look at live birth, we look at birth rates, we look at market and housing trends and mobility. In some of the slides, you will see where we try to track some of your subdivisions that are being built or your housing, so we'd know just how that is going, because you need to be prepared for that. Obviously, pre-K and special needs classrooms are important to you because of the housing needs of those students. The enrollment factor of that is a little different than regular classrooms. House Bill 251, which is school choice, has been around for a long time, but that allows teachers and employees in your school district to bring their child to work and to school. So that can change the enrollment of a school pretty quickly. Then other type of programs that your district offer, whether it's alternative ed, online learning, homeschooling, and, and various other things, we try to track all of that and be knowledgeable of that because it certainly helps us as we forecast. The first two or three slides are going to be more global or national or state, and then we'll get more right down to your county. But it's, so page four, it's just, we look at in migration because you as a county are a growing county, and you grow in various ways. Sometimes in affordability, you will see that maybe your first and second grade total enrollment is one number, then when you get to the sixth or seventh grade, that enrollment has increased. Now, it could be because of in migration, but it also has a factor in there that affordability. So maybe as a 25-year-old with a four-year-old kid or, or six-year-old child, maybe a few years later, I can afford a little bit more or a different subdivision. So we track that. So that's what this slide basically is, is just the migration of people moving into your, your district. Page five is, you see a, a black part, that was actually a little video that we were going to show, but it looks good. But anyway, that's the reason for that. But the important part of this is Atlanta and the Atlanta area, the Atlanta itself is the third highest population increase in the United States, second only to Houston and Dallas-Fort Worth. And there's another slide that I've shown before that shows the eight top cities in the nation in growth, and they're all in the South. The next slide, slide six, is important because you see the darker blue parts, and the next slide after this will be even more showing. Atlanta has grown, but we are now growing out. So counties like Gwinnett, I'm sorry, Calwita and other counties surrounding the inner part where Gwinnett and DeKalb and Atlanta and Fulton and Cobb, it's now moving out. And that's just an indicator here, and the next slide shows it even better. So I call this kind of the second perimeter because you can see what used to be called the Big Four, they're growing, and they're still growing, but by percentage, they are not growing anywhere nearby percentage that the second perimeter is growing. The next slide will show that even more. Page eight, you'll see that the Atlanta Regional Commission, and I, and I use the Atlanta Regional Commission and the governor's office of planning and budget because they go out to 2050 and they're about to go out to 2060, trying to forecast the enrollment all across the state. And so we, we use that information because it's valuable, and you can see that the current forecast from the Atlanta Regional Commission indicates that the fastest growth area is what I am now calling that second perimeter, and you're a part of that. Paulding, Cherokee, Forsyth, Barrow, Walton and Calwita. You can see on the right-hand side, the, the 2020 population and the 2050 forecast, the highest percentage of change of growth, you're, you're in that. So that alone would tell you that you need to be taking a look at this because the growth is coming. And, and so it's important for school districts to be able to look at, at this growth and really start being able to put themselves in a position where you can forecast for new schools, attendance zone changes, and all of those kind of things. The next slide, slide nine, is simply an indication of your population in your county in 2022 was 152,882. That was up 19.5% from 127,939 who lived in the county in 2010. You look in the bottom left-hand corner, and you can see that we received this information from the U.S. Census. For comparison, the U.S. population grew 7.7%. Georgia's population grew 12.4% during this period. So that's what I said a few minutes ago, that there's another slide I've used in the past where it shows the eight fastest growing areas, and they're all in the South. Page 10 and page 11, so we try to track the building permits, and the next three or four slides will show you that because you need to know where the building is of apartments or housing or single-family homes, so you will know where you need to be looking in future property purchases and a multitude of other types of things. So we just put this slide, and this is called a heat map. In 2024, the calendar year of 2024, these are the building permits and their locations. Doesn't have the number, but you can see the, the more bright color is the more building permits compared to the other lighter colors. The next, the next page is new home sales, and it, and we just simply did this with a heat map too, to show one year of growth. So you can see some of the middle schools, we've listed all the middle schools, and their percentage of growth in that one year. So you can see where your very first middle school, Arnold Middle School, is 6.8 growth in one year in home sales. That's an indicator. And this whole report is about indicators and trends. So you look for those indicators so you'll know next steps and future steps. And on slide number 12, we just did the elementary five-year growth. And you can see in some areas you've gone down and other areas that you've gone up. And that's, that's a trend too, but that's also why you need to monitor that because over the next year or two, that could drastically change. So we look at it very closely. The next slide, 13, is the high school 10-year growth by percentage. And you can see your three high schools, and you can see Northgate had the highest growth percentage of students in the 10-year period.
Mr. Wilson, if you don't mind, board members, just want to call your attention on Northgate. Remember the redistricting from East Calwita to Northgate. So some of that, some of that bigger number that you see there is, is a little bit self-induced. Sorry, Mr. Wilson.
No, nope. Thank you for clarifying for me. Then the, the next slide just simply says looking ahead. So when you get to slide 15, 16 and 17, we're, we're literally putting on here subdivisions that we're monitoring. And it's important because these are new developments, these are land purchases, they're existing neighborhoods entering into multiple phases, and it's important to know where those are, how many permits are coming out of there, how fast they're growing. So you can just, so it's something we do. We just keep a, a, a close watch on your growth across your county, whether it's apartments, whether it's single-family homes, or whatever it may be, it's just an important one. The next slide is an example again. You can see a popular, popular reserve, preserve. It's nearing its end. It started in 2018 from D.R. Horton. It was a planned 596-home subdivision. There are 382 new homes that have been built as of the end of calendar year 2024. That is, is a good subdivision, but it also can affect schools greatly and its population. Yes, ma'am?
Quick question. How do you know how many of those homes may have children? Because I know you've explained that to us before. You do, you did some kind of math.
We do. We don't, we don't use the math that you used to use in demography where you just, every house had X-point number of students, and you just really can't depend on that any longer. So we do go, and, and we use it several ways. We use the census to help us. We use your city planning and your city governments, they all participate and help us, as well as the county government. So that's the, really the most accurate way that we use that now because the old formula just simply doesn't work.
Yes, sir. He said that.
Absolutely. Sure does. And I, and that's a great question, and thank you for, because I, I kind of mentioned that in the beginning, because you'll see if, if you analyze, and I'll show a slide here in just a minute, where you have the first grade and the second grade and the fourth grade, and you grow, and some of it is not people moving, they're moving in when they can afford to purchase that type of housing. So, and, and you see that everywhere you go, that you'll see, there's one county that I work with, and, and they're, they believe they, and they are actually in decline, a large district that's grown for years, but affordability now has become an issue for them. So what I do there is the first, second and third grade are in decline, and then when you get to middle school and high school, they go back up. And, and, and there's a rationale for that, and as, as you get a little older and you make a little more money or whatever, or you save a little bit of money, then you get to the point where maybe you can afford a larger home as your family grows. But that's, we, we try to track that the best we can, and that was kind of your question too. And the count, 17 is just an introduction. The next three or four slides, we simply show you by a bar chart, the, your enrollment growth and history. So this slide's 18 is just your system-wide 10-year enrollment history. It is important for us as demographers and planners to take a look at that. And you'll see in 2020, you were down, well, that's the COVID year. So that's again, another trend and an indicator. The good part about that is, is this looks just like every other school district in the state, that it went, we went down. the state, that it went, we went down in 2020. The good part about this is you go back up, and you start showing growth. And, and then we, we just broke it down. So in slide 19, it's in enrollment history, and it's talking a little bit about the, the past COVID, because we simply wanted to show that you rebounded, and you rebounded very well. A lot, most districts did, but some districts didn't. They lost students and they didn't get all of them back, or even a close number, because the change was multiple fa, multiple factors there. But it's, it's a good slide, because it shows you rebounded, which is a good thing. Then we put one together that is for elementary, it's the next slide, and you can see that we just tracked it for five years. You can also see on the left-hand side, where in 2020 you went down, that was the COVID years, and so it's just another indication that you're coming back up in the elementary schools. The middle schools, somewhat the same way. So we, we just track you for the last five years to see where the enrollment is, and, and, and it's a slight enrollment growth, and the same thing for the high schools. It's a, it's an enrollment growth. If I can move to slide 23, this is an important slide, so I went two or three slides there pretty quickly. But on slide 23, if you can follow me, it's a little bit hard to follow, but it tells a real good story. So if you go to the, kind of the bottom left-hand corner where it says 2012, and then the green line that goes up, we're basically tracking your current senior class for the last 12 years. And there's a lot of things to look at. So did it grow? Did it drop? Did you maintain your students? And you can see that if you look at kindergarten in 2012, you had 1,707 kindergarteners that year. And as you go through, you maintained pretty well. So in the, in their junior year, you had 1,700, 1,717 students. You dropped a little bit, but your senior class sometimes graduates quicker and some of those kind of things with work-study. But it's important to look at this and look at it carefully, because there's a lot of indicators. And you see the red circle. Well, what that red circle is, is that in kindergarten, you see a red circle in 2012. So the largest kindergarten class that you've had in the last 13 years was in 2012. Okay? Then if you go way over to the right-hand side, you will see in the 12th grade, the largest class of the 12th grade for those 13 years matched is 1,700 and 13 students, and that was the class of, if I go across correctly, 2021 or 2022. And, and so it's important to look at this, because as you do your planning for each year for, for allotments, you will see that some grades are different. And if, and it's important, and it's really good that you can track. So, so what we do is we, we go and do your history, and we track your kids from the time they get in kindergarten all the way through. And it helps you in, in attendance planning and what you may need over the next 10 or 12 years, knowing each grade level of students. So it's a good slide. And, and we're forecasting, and you can see in the bottom left-hand corner, expect middle school to have its largest sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade classes next year. So you're, you're growing, and you're growing in the middle school area.
And board members, I'll mention here, and you're well-positioned for that growth. You brought a new middle school online four years ago, Blake Bass Middle. You just redistricted students a couple of years ago. I think it's three years ago now, from East Calweda to Northgate. In addition, at the high school level, every block, we have several hundred students that go out to do enrollment to the Central Educational Center. So we're, we're well-positioned. I say that because I don't want you to be alarmed by the fact that our sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade classes will all be our largest next year. That bubble, that bubble will work its way through, just like it's moved from elementary now into middle school.
That's right. Absolutely. The next three slides are just simply showing the attendant zone for high school, middle, and elementary, and the percentage of, of students in each of those areas. So you've got middle, you've got high, middle, and elementary, and what the superintendent was saying is, we are really forecasting that you're going to continue to grow more in the middle school area. And so we did that for each of the three levels. So slide 27 just simply shows every school, their 10-year growth, their five-year growth, their 2020 FTE numbers, their 2024 FTE numbers. We, we received information from the administration here on the number of IUs and the capacity of each of the schools and the percentage of utilization. And, and so there's, there's two or three ways that school districts determine their, their capacity and their utilization. And so it works best when the school district itself creates that formula. There is a very outdated formula at the state level, and then building utilization sometimes works when you really try to get down to all of the special needs classrooms that are a different population of size, of number, than other classrooms. So this is the information that we got from the school district, and we think they're doing it very correctly, because it's important. So as the last slide I have, and I know I've gone through these rather quickly, but it's an executive summary. And, and the reason that these type of studies are important to school districts is because, like I said, the enrollment study identifies trends and indicators. And if you follow those trends and indicators, then in your planning, and your finance person did his report on the budget, it's important for him to know where the growth is. So these kind of studies help finance in their planning, and it's just truly indicators and trends that help. And you see in the very first paragraph, the aligning attendant zones with current land ownership and parcel data, which helps you predict future developments, and it helps you build across two school zones to create an opportunity, which is always good if you can, that is more direct feeds. And, and then in the last paragraph, we mentioned that, and we use a formula for live births, and it doesn't work quite to the level that it used to because of the Kenny, McKinney Act and House Bill 251, where you've got abilities to move around that, that live births don't predict. The good part about the live birth part is, I looked at it just today to make sure, the, the way the formula works, you take your enrollment, you take your live births for X-year, you move forward six years later, and that should be a predictor for your first grade. Now, in your case, you're at every year, I went back 10, 15 years, you're at 90-something percent on every year. So you are maintaining or keeping, or families are staying here. So in their births of children, six years later, they're entering schools, and in some cases, you are all but just right on that number. So I go to the live births at the Department of Public Health, I see the number of live births that were here in this county, and, and if they're in the military, and they're overseas or whatnot, if their home address is here, those are counted. So it's a pretty accurate count of live births for your county. And one I just did last week, they were at 80%. They were pleased with that. Well, they don't know that you're at about 95%, because they would be very pleased with that. So that, that's just an indicator that when families come here, they stay here. And so that also helps you as a school board and an administration know that you've got children coming, and you need to prepare for it. So, questions if needed.
Mr. Wilson, just want to, want to thank you once again. Board members, I do want to point out, on the next to the last slide, if you look at our building utilization, district-wide, system total, 90%. 88% in elementary, which is right where you want to be, our middle school total is 94, and then 90 at the high school. That, that, that means that we, we don't build unless we need to. There are, there are avenues we can use. He mentioned redistricting, if we need to, as a result of gathering this information. The staff has it, we're taking a look at it, and we will, we will certainly adjust accordingly. This, this reinforces for me, though, that we're doing the right work, we're studying the right things. I had hoped that the areas that we were tracking, that, that it would show on this, and those areas where you've seen a pretty decent growth, those are areas that we've already been tracking. So more to come, we'll keep watching it. And Mr. Wilson, I'm sure we'll be talking again sometime soon. Thank you for your help.
Thank you.
Thank you. Each month at this time, we set aside 45 minutes for public comments. We did not have anyone signed up to speak this month, so we'll move on to board comments. Do you have any board comments? Looks like no board com-
I do, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. DeBose.
Just as, as we are winding down the school year, I just want to give a couple shout-outs real quick, if you don't mind. Number one, Northgate has had a band director, and I say a band director, he's been there for 29 years, is retiring this year. So I wanted to give a shout-out to Mr. Alan Armstrong for all that he's done for Northgate and the Northgate community as well. Another educator, Ms. Becky Bush, she, she's a coach in the middle schools, and she just won her 20th Calweda County Middle School Championship for track this year. So congratulations to her. Give a shout-out to a couple of teams, too. Northgate Girls Soccer is playing for the state championship Friday evening in Duluth, and as we are sitting here right now, the Northgate, or, excuse me, the Noonan baseball team is currently playing in the Final Four. They won their first game. I'll give you an update of nine to one. So they're, I think, about to start game two. I don't have an update on that one yet. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, do I have a motion to enter to executive session to discuss personnel, real estate, and potential litigation?
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you for everyone for being here.